Good evening. It is approximately 5:30 PM on Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Most Uncle, Luke Amit, Amelia Boyd, Ben McGrann, and Nick Palito. Absent this evening is Slate Kemp. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberatory, and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any other general announcements from the Commissioners or from city staff?
No.
Oh, I have one. I would just like to welcome Nick Palito to the Commission.
Thank you very much. Welcome indeed. First on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the July 5th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes and the minutes are approved. New business. The next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion of the Comprehensive Plan update. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Twetton for an overview of status and next steps.
Tonight, what I wanted to get, I feel like we restarted, but is back to work on the comprehensive plan. You had a few months where we did a lot of
Other stuff.
Development applications, so that has to take precedence. So just bringing us all up to speed where we are now and moving toward where we're going. So again, part of the reason we were holding off was really we wanted that data from the Leland study. Because that was going to get that reintegrated into some of the work that had previously been done to update the data. So we didn't want to get too far down the road before we had that. But now you see that that report has been drafted. It's still in the refinement stages. The strategic planning of City Council was adopted. And then we did enter the contract or amended the contract for Logan Simpson. Council approved that in June. There's still work going on on the utility side, but those efforts that were all going to be informing the comprehensive plan or helping to update what had already happened. We're pretty much through that phase now. So for now, we had gotten, you know, I think back in April, May, we did, I went through what the vision statements were with the commission. And that is what I provided you in the packet for the meeting. It's, you know, the first two chapters and kind of how the information today has been formatted. This is more of the background information. So on the, just on the timeline. So we'll talk a little bit about these first two chapters and that those of you who are on the commission were involved in the 2019 update to that airport chapter, but that's also included in here. And so that gives you an idea really of how the chapters are going to be formatted. But going forward, August 2nd, just to give you a timeline in terms of what I see in terms of development for these that I know are coming versus meetings. We can focus exclusively on the comprehensive plan and then where we may need to schedule some special meetings. August 2nd, we do have a full development plan that will be coming through over, but we will probably have some time on the comp plan. But that meeting, August 16th is going to be exclusively on the comprehensive plan. I'm still working with the consultants, see if they can do a remote workshop at that meeting. And then the September 9th meeting, your regular meeting, the first of the month. I will not be here. We do not currently have any applications on that agenda. And I don't know that we will, so I may see if you'd be willing to reschedule that meeting. So then we could schedule it for another date and that that would be an exclusive comprehensive plan meeting as well. So I'll reach out to it. Possible dates could be either August 23rd, which would be then the third Tuesday of August, or a special meeting in September. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that, that we may be canceling the regular September 9th meeting.
Do you mean that September 6th?
September 6th. You're right.
Okay.
It's not the night. Yep. So.
Amy, have a question. Is there going to be a joint meeting like we did with the Leland study with with council about the comp plan or is that?
There will be as we get into it a little bit more.
deeper.
But we will definitely do a joint.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So just wanted to go briefly through the information that was sent. Again, that first chapter is the introduction to the plan, so it gives background information. This is again, and there'll be a whole, a whole section of the plan, the area of city impact. But that's the boundary. There was a map here of the current ACI, but that will be the updated ACI. Then it just goes through, you know, legal reasons for the required elements of a comprehensive plan per state statute. Where we have been planning historically in the community as well as changes that have occurred as a result really of the last one.
Could I interrupt for a question before you proceed further? That was going back to the ACI. Does the adjustment of that ACI boundary have to be approved by any other jurisdictions other than the city of Sandpoint?
It is negotiated with.
Okay.
When do we expect that to occur, the approval of of that ACI?
They, because they lost the county planner, it's been delayed a little bit, but they're going to try and get it started yet this summer and into the fall. And we hope to have it negotiated by the end of the year. So then just the review of the public participation that has occurred to date. And then really what is the layout? How is the organization of the plan going to be laid out to make sure we are covering all the required components of state law? So again, these were the first two chapters, the introduction and the key vision. And then I think the next, the ones that I have asked consultants to kind of bring forward to the commission to do workshops to make sure that, again, what the committee said and is incorporated into the plan under first. I think we'll try to do them more straightforward once first, which is community character and design. We'll probably skip over land use growth, housing. I think land use growth and housing, those are two we are going to have to do workshops on. Because that's where we really have, you know, there's a lot of goals and objectives around in bill, keeping community character. What does that mean? And so how do we look that forward when we're, you know, we need clear goals and objectives and strategies. So that when we are updating the zoning ordinance, it's reflective of what it says in the plan. And those, those are the areas I see from the different components where there's definitely conflict between some of the goals and objectives. So I think those are two areas we definitely need to do workshops around. Chapter six is multimodal transportation. There was the whole master plan behind that. A lot of that work will get pulled into this chapter, park recreation trails. Again, there was a master plan on for that. Public facilities and utilities. That's one that I think will have more importance under this plan than perhaps it has in the past. Just the importance of our, particularly our, our utilities and how it relates to rural development. Then jobs and economic development, a lot of the information from the Leland Report kind of informs that chapter. Then you have, they're provided for tonight, the chapter 10, public airport facility that was updated in 2019. And then the natural resource and hazard areas. So those are the the way the chapters are laid out for the actual plan. And again, just that this, the comprehensive plan is broad goals. It's a policy direction that is kind of overarching all these other documents, but all the other plans should fit into it. But the comprehensive plan may not have the level of detail as some of these other sub area plans. Those will always exist in a more detail. We just want to make sure that the comprehensive plan is saying something completely different than some sub area plan that we have. Profiles, some of this, I think they had already updated from the Leland study, but this will get updated a little more. Some of this will get updated as well, but some of the data. This was one where I didn't get a chance to ask them. I, it looks like before the Leland report, they were using a 3.4 or over 3% growth rate. And I think what the Leland report is looking at is positive 2.4.
Could I ask a question? Kind of just if you backed up to that, actually the San, the little San Creek watershed map. I was just curious. I know a couple of years ago, there was an effort by the BLM to try and swap land with the Forest Service. Because they didn't really want any holdings up here in North Idaho. Do you know if any of that is still trying to happen? Or would that in any way impact this? They're both federal agencies. I don't suppose it would.
I don't think it would affect the comprehensive plan process if it's all the watershed property. I'm sure we would be happy to.
I was just curious if there was still any of that discussion.
So then the community vision, again, we did, I kind of ran through this a few months ago. Just, these are the vision. So the, the vision very much follows the the pillars of the vision are following the pillars of the city strategic plan. So responsive government. Again, that's so that's the first pillar. Resilient economy. Fiber culture.
I have one question on the livable community page right there as well. I can't, it came up in the, the Leland study and it's something that I might concur with, and that is when we talk about housing needs in Sandpoint. I don't think it's, when we talk about affordable housing, I, I don't think that's something that market forces will ever accomplish. And they had talked about public-private partnerships. And I'm curious if that is a phrase that would benefit us to put in this section of the document that we are, however it might be worded, open-minded, willing to explore, looking for. But public-private partnerships, so that people might know that is something we're interested in.
Right. And I think that probably would be, we can put it in the vision, but we would probably also put in our goals and objectives. But that is in the housing chapter, the housing and neighborhood's chapter. That's certainly true then. And that it needs to be a regional solution because the city can't solve it.
Right.
Not only housing problem here, although so both the regionalism and, well, I shouldn't use that word. Both the intergovernmental cooperation and public-private partnerships, I think will come across as strong objectives in our actions.
Excellent.
So do you want me to go through, I have to go through what this responsive.
I looked it over and have no questions. I don't know if other people do, or if there's anything they'd like to see more detail presented.
I'm just curious of, is there a ranking here? Like why responsive government, government first?
I don't think it's priority.
I think it's this natural inclination that when you see this, it feels like that's the priorities. And as a community member, I, I don't know. I'm sure there's very different in opinions on what the priorities of these are, but for me, it's probably more maybe almost inverse of this, that a livable community is probably, would be from a real estate standpoint, my priority, but I think it's just a perception, right? Like what's the priorities?
I think since they're city council pillars, right? If I remember, council strategic plan, that's what these are. I think it's just my impression is that it just goes from being responsive government, because that's where it's coming from, their strategic plan. And then just informing or just giving the information out there of what the plan is and then going down the line. I don't think, and that's my opinion. It just doesn't seem like it's a priority. I just think it's a more informational type.
And these are, these, I mentioned that we're going to, just to, because it has been a while since the workshops, these are the statements that are going to be put in a survey. Just that people agree or just see that these are state vision statements that they think are important to the comprehensive plan. And I actually, to your point, that I didn't put in the ones about responsive government because it is more about responsive government is how we will get to these things, but all the other areas are much more, I would say, the land use and community related. The responsive government is needed to implement all of those, but I actually didn't put these four bullets in the survey. Is the airport facility. This was just updated in 2019. It's had a lot of really, really good information. And clearly the goals are to protect.
If you back up Amy to the previous page, there's one thing that really stuck out to me. And it's right there. Key existing developments and proposed zoning are not in alignment with ITD Euro Aero Guidance and Post Potential Conflicts Within Key Zones Such As Recommended Lateral Safety Zone and Inner Critical Safety Zones. That really stuck out to me. Is there any? Are we in that process of making sure we don't have the malalignment? Like it says?
Well, we, we're much more sensitive now to, and obviously and clearly the denial of just choice or cut off COP was the first big action that this was it was seen as very not compatible with the standard. So there, you know, if there are land use actions like a rezon or conditional use, perhaps we look closely. But again, if you think of, there's, there's other actions like where we're supplying subdivision that they're not asking for us to change anything. That, you know, there's, it's about sticking strictly to the FAA guidelines and the this chapter of comprehensive plan versus other community needs. But we definitely are very cognizant of this now and as some of the goals and objectives talk about. We have the airport owner land zone, but on the rate was not. And just trying to get more of that environmental cooperation with the other jurisdictions and then with the county and, you know, to make sure we are all on the same page.
Does the, does the zoning map that we have, does it reflect? I guess the airport guidance and that, does it show it? Does it outline it?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
And has that been updated based off of this report or when, when was the most recent update of that? Because you said that there was, the land use was denied, but.
That there was, that was yeah, January, there, there had been a request for a residential development recommended by the planning, it's like commission and council, and then it was appealed to city council.
Right.
And city council overturned it. The zoning wasn't placed at that point. Because we have both the amendments, the conference plan, and then we also have the bigger part, chapter of the zoning ordinance.
You said it was or wasn't?
It was.
Oh, it was. Okay.
Yeah, we adopted this in 2019, pretty early in the year. But to, to like go over that, none of the zoning has changed in there. It's we notify people or ask the, in the deed that they're in, in that zone. Oh, so people are, property owners are notified when they're in that zone and then a whole development can't be entirely in that zone or only a small portion of it can be. Is that right? Because we did approve a subdivision that had a small corner that was in the inner critical zone, but only like a very small part of it. So we still could approve housing in the inner critical zone. But we, we want to try to not to, or, or that high density is, is not a goal there.
What you're precluded from doing at this point is approving a zone change that increases density.
So the zoning that's there can be used.
Yes, and you've, you've had projects come before you in the existing zoning, asking only to do what they're allowed to do within that zone, but not asking for a zone change to increase density.
Or official use permit that would also allow housing. So yeah, there's the, the chapter gives a lot of the, you know, economic background data on the impact of the airport on the community. And just for the diversity of the economy as well, airspace and effect, I rely on smaller airports as well. So yeah, and I mean, right here, the first goal is protect public health, safety, welfare, work with other county, to be aware of the airport activity and responsive needs of the public. So that, I, so again, this, this is showing how through the chapters, it's going to, when there is a goal and the objectives, it's going to identify what, what part of the vision those are trying to direct us towards.
So who's the author of these goals?
The goals were compiled by consultants as a result of the public outreach.
Okay, so this is Logan Simpson?
Yes.
Okay.
And is this chapter considered a finished document?
Yes, this chapter was already adopted.
Yep.
I don't think there's any, there've been any updates to it. We can find a look to see if there's maybe data that we, you know, if the number of flights in and out have dramatically increased, we probably want to update that before complete the plan, but overall, it's so that is all I have, I'm afraid. But like I said, I'm the August meetings will be focused on comp plan and then hopefully if we can go to one special meeting scheduled either August or September, that will also be a focus. We're trying to get as much of the new workshops and everything done, no later than October, November, so that then the actual completely documented, that I have a whole approval process, public meetings will occur during winter, during winter. We saw the target to document that.
I have a general question about that. I know, you know, at our last joint meeting with and going over the Leland study. Most of that was completed before we saw the impacts of COVID on our community in terms of remote workers and, and that's that population moving into the area. I'm curious if there's any if it's even conceivable to update data. If we think it's a significant change that's not reflected in that study because it was completed prior to the impacts of the COVID economy on Sandpoint. I mean, most of their data and their growth projections, I, I think they're not terribly accurate anymore. Even though it's two years old, but those two years have been enormously significant. Correct.
I think that was a lot of those. A lot of those numbers were based on the 2020 census and then they did have some numbers from April of 2021.
But not frequently.
Yeah, I mean, they, they tried to get.
I mean, they, yeah, I don't know. That's it. It's like I said, isn't even conceivable. Is there more data? Is, and I don't know. I don't know where they would.
The intent behind the study was to get the most current data.
Yeah, and that might be it. And that might be it.
Again, data, particularly census data likes quite a bit.
Yes.
You know, if there's other ways we can get an information, it is, you know, I think probably the most. Most updated data that was that IRS data in terms of. Incomes of people moving into the community and people moving out. But so much. Data is, you know, there's a lag from when they collect it, but I understand the point and that, that was the whole purpose of. Getting updated data. The other challenge we have is being a small community because most. Data sources don't go below the county level or tell me that it's our population. So I don't know that we. Unless we do our own studies and, and, you know, so I think we have as current data as we're going to be able to. But it is, you know, even if we don't have the discussion or if we don't have specific data. We definitely need to talk about, I mean, they mentioned Zoom times that.
Right.
That we have had the impact of remote workers. Is there data on that? They didn't share any if there is. Well, we certainly need that discussion in the comprehensive plan if not.
And, and I don't know if it's changed much over the summer, but I know last spring, I know that at the high school they were preparing for a dramatically increased population at the high school. Which is reflective, obviously, the population or the type of population moving here.
And they were basically.
Kids who had already enrolled, new students who had already enrolled for the, this coming fall.
So they were, they were getting, it wasn't, they weren't starting in the younger grades. They were coming in.
Well, and I don't know about the younger grades because I was at the high school. So I, all I know is at the high school, but yeah.
Yeah, and we definitely part of the. Public facilities.
Right.
You know, that whole chapter. Will need to include. School district data.
Yeah.
Was there any data included in that that came from like our utility addresses and stuff like that?
Yeah, they did use some and that, that, they had some of the utility data. That's what informed the. Decision to go with a 2.4% just watching utility usage. Was the. I think, I think it is the county, I think the county plan is using like a 3.5% control rate. So they had that range of 3.5 that county was using and then I think the state demographer was only projecting one point something. But based on what. They're seeing at the utility usage is where they can go up with the 2.4.
Another question that I didn't ask that night, but it fleetingly went through my brain. When we talked about intergovernmental cooperation, the one jurisdiction that never came up was Segal. And is that because they're not a township? I mean, not, not a town. I mean, obviously they have a huge impact on Sandpoint. I'm just curious.
We, rather this question came up before and Fonda, I think, looked up what exactly. They're not a town, they're not a village. They're, I mean, they're not an incorporated area.
They're just considered rural Bonner County. But they get a nameplate.
It's interesting that they. Where I came from in Michigan, they were probably considered a township was just a, you know, it's a G bracket boundary. But you don't have township too, so it's not that.
And they don't have any elected government? That's okay.
We have a joint powers agreement with Segal or with.
There'd be nobody to have it with.
Fire, fire department or the Selkirk Fire. That's about the only thing I could think of that has any kind of government organization and that's probably mostly on our end.
Yeah, we don't provide any other services in Segal other than fire.
We have, we actually have lots of the jurisdictional. Agreements.
Right.
But more information in the plan of. Has historically been there, just. Contemplated.
Is that the end of your presentation? Commissioners, do we have more questions?
Yeah, just kind of a comment is. The information I thought was, some of it was. Not alarming, but it was a little surprising and the growth was a, the big one, I think. I mean, I. The, the general consensus in the public is that the growth is out of control. But that study helped me to see that what I feel like is a growth is, you know, it's manageable. So I don't think we need to have like a big, huge reaction to this massive flow of people that probably aren't going to come, you know, all at once. Cause. This has happened about every 10 years or maybe a little more than 10 years since I've been a little kid here. So. We, we've had this, you know, gearing up for a big influx of people and then by the time we're in the middle of planning for it, there's a recession and people are moving away. Cause looking at the population number went down almost a thousand people and from 2008 to 2010. And I don't think we're looking at that right now, but. With the numbers that came in with that study, you know, being nearly three years old. It's probably the best we're going to get. And then factoring in that, you know, we're probably looking at a slowdown. That could be significant for extended period. I felt like the numbers probably line up pretty good. And maybe are a little bit short, but. But I, I thought about the same thing, like, you know, how do we get better, you know, up to date stuff? And there's really no way besides doing our own study and that's probably going to push us out another, another year or something. And we're kind of, you know, overdue already. So, cause I think the last update was 2009.
The last major overall, yeah.
So. We're within that, but I had some questions about how do? How do we, or what part do we have in? Shaping like zone adjustments or changes or, or this area of city impact? What, what role do we have in guiding that or? What, what can we do to prepare ourselves to? To make the best decisions on that? Is it, you know, outside of these meetings, of course.
Well, the, the negotiation will be not just. I mean, your area of city impact is areas you may intend to annex into. So the recommendation of Cleveland, and I think it's probably in the conference, is come up with a whole sub-area plan. But what are the land uses you think? Are going to happen in ACI? What is the transportation network? What's the utility network? What are the, you know, most likely in our ACI, the land use is going to be residential, but what density is residential? So once you kind of come up with what are your densities of, of land uses, then. The county. You know, there are some county. Municipal areas of city impact where they negotiate zoning. That with what codes can apply in the ACI. But I either, you know, we may use some of our, the same zoning that we have within the city boundary, or we may come up with totally different zoning categories. But I think until we get a little farther along in negotiations with the county. We won't know exactly, we won't put on the zoning path right away.
So inside the city, the current city limits, as far as zone adjustments or, or any changes or new zoning. Kind of the same thing, what our needs are based on that study, where, what areas can handle it and what areas wanted or needed. Is that kind of the same approach?
And that'll all be, that'll be working through the future land use map. And. If, you know, there's areas now that we're showing as. Yeah, right now we have what are called character areas, which are a little hard to understand. Character area 1.5 is, so you could also do a future land use map that just talk, you know, it's not zoning, but it says this is high density residential area. This is a medium density residential area. This is a mixed residential area. To just make it a little more. Refine. So you can look at a land use map. It's not a zoning map, but it gives you a better idea of the land uses in that area. And I think as we're going through the land use map update, there are areas that will probably be. Looking at more closely.
We, we have to be careful because a city initiated zone change affects people's personal property rights. So when we do the future land use map. That's going to drive whether or not we need to do a city initiated zone change for the current zoning. But we have to be really careful that we don't take any individual property rights away in performing that transition. We have that going on right now in the city of Hayden. So when they did their comprehensive plan in 2019 and adjusted their future land use map. They also eliminated residential multifamily as a zone under the basically the, a trade-off for moving those parcels into mixed residential or single-family residential, depending on what the current use on the parcel is. Well, that affected 547 parcels and you can imagine that the, what the individual landowners did when they found out their zone was going to change and they didn't quite yet understand what that meant. So a city initiated zone change that affects people's personal property rights, if not handled with kid gloves, can create a lot of chaos. And so we'd be really. I would caution us to be really careful if we end up needing to go down that route.
I have a question, Amy. When, when we first met, we were talking about this document and some of the contradictions that were happening from the amendment to the original document. Does this new iteration of the document satisfy those, those contradictions?
We're not quite there yet, but. We clearly will have. Goals and objectives that conflict. You know, so there's a lot of discussion about protecting community character, allowing infield development. Blowing and enhancing downtown as the center of the community, you know, so all there's. There, there's always going to be. Certain, you know, because you get a broad, you know, you get a lot of input in the beginning and you have all these goals and objectives. They don't always like, you know, there's. I, I would say we'll always have a little bit of that.
Thank you. Yeah, we, so we've had that with grid, street pattern. Just want to bring the grid type street patterns and in a new development. That's on the comprehensive plan, but we've been very. It's been very hard to maintain that. So just a personal note, like. Some stuff in the plan just. Just doesn't fit for a lot of development. And so I, I don't know, do we take it out or do we change it to a different? Or do we say, well, we want that ideal where possible, where, where it can happen? Cause. In the plan, I feel like it says that if that is an ideal, there should be like strongly, you know, met, you know. But as we've seen since in my short time here is, I think we only had a couple of developments, maybe that could even come close to maintaining or adding that, you know, city, street, city block look and. So yeah, there's, there's definitely contradictions that make it tough to decide, you know. You know, are we going to try to maintain that or are we moving in a totally different direction? Or is it just because there's so many of these smaller developments that don't really take up enough acreage to have enough street coverage? Although I feel like some of them have definitely had enough room. So. Yeah, that's for me, learning about the comprehensive plan has been like. A guide that sometimes. Is, is just a guide. It's not like, I don't know, it's not exactly law. It's not exactly. Zoning law, but yeah, the character of the community, where possible, it should be adhered to and. Yeah, so that's, I agree, it's, it's difficult to find that line where. Where we're sticking with the comp plan, but we're also not changing, you know, not affecting people's property rights or their development, you know, capabilities. So. Yeah.
And most.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's a great example. And for Amy who hasn't been here long enough really to have watched the commission struggle with this and for some of the new commissioners, we've had some developments come forward. And when one of the standards of review is, is this project consistent with the comprehensive plan? Our commission has really struggled with some of those ideals of, of, you know, the grid pattern streets. I think that's a great example. And so to the extent that we can clean up some of those pieces now is our opportunity, because that has been difficult to analyze and, and want to make a finding that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, but yet it doesn't look consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I think that part of the issue with that too is when we get. A, a 20 acre, I mean, a 20 home subdivision here and then it's open land around it. If that was all developed at once, it would be a beautiful spot for a grid pattern. But when it's 20 homes now and 20 homes in two years and 20 homes in three years. I don't know how you would make that vision of what it would look like if it was all being developed at once would make, which would make it more coherent and more in tune with the cup plan. But that's out of our purvey, I'm assuming.
It is in the days where the farmers all enclose the city. They did, you know, they planned it all at one time.
Yeah, and a lot of those developments is because of the market being, you know, favorable to where development can pay for itself. And if. If you wait years, then the market's gone probably and, and then there'll be no street, no houses anyway. So. Yeah, I, I feel like some of the stuff, keeping those things in mind though, has. And we've mentioned it enough and developers have heard it and it is in the plan that some of the stuff that I see coming up. I think it does kind of start to follow that because out in the, that airport area and north of. Boyer or west side of Boyer. There's a lot of area there that could follow the grid pattern and, and it makes more sense for developments anyway, I think. So I think they're seeing that and saying, well, we don't need to have like a cul-de-sac in every development when it could just go to the next street and. Be cheaper for them and make more sense for all kinds of reasons. So maybe we have kind of, you know, help put the word out and, you know, eventually got that ideal back. So maybe it does stay in there. I don't know. I. I think, I think you're right. Like it's. You know, if all the developers got together that had adjoining property, they could probably come up with a really good plan and spend less money too. And have it all come through in one application instead of, you know, two at a time. And have it all come through in one application instead of, you know, two at a time. So.
Any questions, comments from any commissioners? If there's no further business, I will adjourn this meeting at, watch, here we go, six twenty one. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.